Do you agree with this?
Let me say, it's a safe to not be challenged. I mean, I get the passive, but it's still, it's still at work, that's just whether it's susceptible to being challenged.
Okay, any more discussion? Anybody else like to say anything up here? Okay.
I do appreciate hearing from Greg to coming in here in the proper order.
Okay, um, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to strike down ordinance two thousand sixteen dash thirty-three on second reading.
Yeah, I have a motion to strike down ordinance twenty sixteen dash thirty-three on second reading. Any more questions? We'll call vote, please.
Maya Mackenzie. Kevin Flatwood.
Yes.
Darren Davidson.
Yes.
Jamie Kane.
Yes.
Gerald Holley.
Yes, I think, I think Maya misunderstood.
Okay, so pass it and strike down. Thank you. So, I'd like for you to come in and say anything. Okay.
The next item on the tax base committee, is that just kind of reviewing the, we talked about the incentive agreement, I think in the last meeting week, we added an item seven, actually if you look at the incentive agreement that's signed, Sarah added that under item three. So, I just want to make sure everybody was okay with the wording on that.
Where is it?
It's on item three of that incentive agreement, it's in your package.
It says full-time jobs, that said to employees, must be directly hiring, direct hiring. If we didn't sign it, that was the, we're going to bring it back.
Yeah, we added it as number seven, uh, she changed it to number three, so just want to make sure everybody got a chance to see it. That's, that's how it got, fine ones.
Do we need to go over this again?
No, I'm just bringing it to your attention, I mean, if you, if you didn't agree with that or there's, if that didn't meet the intent of the council, I guess that's what I was bringing it up for, that way if that wasn't what we decided, then you can discuss it. But I think that's what we.
I think with the verbiage in there, direct hire, what we're looking for.
Yeah, because I think that's opposed to, well, as opposed to contract hire.
Yeah.
Terms are, point is the value of hires of contract, staff agency, contracts.
The one thing that we just, I'm just thinking about afterwards, not, I mean, we've done that one, but we, we've not made that a requirement for any other tax evasion, something we might really seriously consider going forward, are we going to require?
Not, that's about it.
Yeah, it's tough, it's gonna be tough, because if they, you know, remove their numbers, how do you know it's those seventy-two or? Yeah, but I, I'm just saying, it's something we've not asked before, and so we just need to figure out what a requirement should be.
One thought I had was perhaps a different time period depending upon hiring full-time employees or using temporary services.
And it's, each company has a different business model on how they use to vary employees. You know, some companies might use a very small amount, some companies use a certain percentage, and then that percentage may be bigger based on certain organizations, so I think.
I mean, I guess, I mean, what's the purpose of abatement for a company to try to incentivize us? They can give greater, give greater abatement to those who meet that incentive, less than those who don't. It seems to be that, over last year, what I've heard more, most, most people saying happens is that the incentive is to hire people with good wages and, and full-time employees.
It is, but do we want to stop companies from building or expanding in our community as well? I mean, I, I just, Maya and I are going to sit on the tax base committee right, as of right now, and we're the ones going to be talking to them, asking those questions, and I don't want to have to turn back around every time we have a meeting and say, well, nope, we're going to change this on your chain. And so that's why I'm asking for the intent from the council here, is what are we going to do moving forward? Because that way we get it straight, the first, we get it right the first time when we bring it, but.
The reason that, I think Darren and I were talking about adding that was because when they, when the request came in and said they'd be selling eighty-two full-time employees, we asked the question.
No, 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 that was my.
What I mean, direct hire, because some people, I've heard people go out, we have only full-time employees. We like to talk about our unemployment rate in Greensburg, because that means employees. I've asked many times about our unemployment rate, what would it mean if you took temporaries out of this? Nobody's provided that piece of information. I just, if a company's going to say that those were value hired employees, but it might be direct hire employees.
I think after talking to Sarah, Mayor, how do you guys correct if I'm wrong, but I think, um, their interpretation on full-time employees was forty hours a week, so it may be, may there will be a temp, a temporary one, and.
So, the question was asked, is that they were value employees, and they said, well, that was our assumption, so.
That was me, I made that comment, I made that.
So, I was just, they said they were removing seventy-two hard times, it's spelled out there, everybody knows. They asked for a tax evasion, and this is, and these are their statements, the word, based on what they say.
When we did it, it said for, for.
So, I.
You know.
But, I think Jamie's right, you know, some kind of consensus about what we're usually doing this for.
I think that it's probably not a bad thing to, to, in, in some cases, with the, the industry, it puts a little pressure, it puts a little pressure on them. I know that, um, if you're a temporary, well, let me, let me start this one. Mayor, we had the, the, the community thing, and top of the list was quality of life, right? Well, you take all the temporaries that are working, their quality of life is not the same as ours, because they can't, they can't go buy a new car. They, they're working forty hours a week, and they're working, you know, they're working Saturdays and Sundays too. But they can't go buy a car, because they don't have a full-time job, temporary position is not considered. They can't buy a house, although they can afford it. But, the way the system works, it doesn't allow, it doesn't allow you, you're not a full-time employee. You're not, you're not employed full-time, therefore, on loan application, that, that's a red mark.
Maya's right, more and more living institutions are, are, it's an automatic strike. If they, when they find out you actually work for a temporary service, more and more living institutions are not considering that as important.
I, I get that too, but I'm just, because I'm just, I'm conflicted, so please, please understand.
All I'm wanting is.
If we don't.
I guess, if a company says they want an abatement, and this is what we're, they're going to guarantee, they're saying, we want to do this, and this is an abatement, I just wanted to do what they say they're going to do.
Well, that's part of what the incentive agreement helps us do, because before, it was either we gave it all to them, or we didn't. And now, at least with the incentive agreement, we can turn back around and say, well, you've only met sixty percent of your obligation, we're only going to give you sixty percent of the abatement you were entitled to this year.
Darren and I are both, we've had conversations about, you get all these abatements, and if I misspoke, he says, how do we know we're, we got what they said we were going to get? It's like there's a checking balance in the system.
Right now, you hear, well, they're, they have to renew that every year, and submit a renewal every year. I think that's why, maybe May or April, we do a bunch of renewals, but part of that is, is it's an honor system to an extent, because we're trusting that the documentation they give us is true and accurate. I mean, we, we don't go out and hand count every employee they've got, or things like that. You're right, there's no, it's kind of an honor system.
Yeah, another big consideration is, we're competing with every other city in the state, that's also using tax base, tax base has incentive, so if you get too restrictive, you're going to try to drive people away.
I, that's, and not, and not just here, but we may be competing with, you know, some of these companies may have plants all around the US or in other places. And so if they're not going to get the abatement here, then they'll go somewhere else where they can, it's just, so do we want to? I guess that's my conclusion here, is what I'm asking, I, I get it, and I just.
I kind of like your thought tonight, but I think it's a wonder, I think it's a good issue.
Well, what I'm hearing from you guys is basically when we review this, we want to see how many full-time employees, full-time employees that they're going to have and use. And, and that's what we did, when we did this, this last one, was when we met with the value, this is what they came up with, with the seventy-two, we just didn't spell it out in our. Because what they do, is what my understanding on the temp is they tread it out like twenty percent of the workforce that's temp, and then they try to pull off the good people off there, within the year, the story, the person's been there for ten years, they still temp, you know? But, this is something that, you know, this was a very positive thing, and the amount of money that they're spending on our new equipment is very positive. And just doing equipment was, was probably the best thing that happened. We've had two now, big companies in the city that stay in winter city, so that's a very positive thing.
Well, I would say at least, when you're doing that tax base committee, that you try to negotiate it, you say that we.
So, around. Direct hire. Right. If they're employed by value, they're going to be a value employee. If they're saying full-time, by value, it's not going to be a temporary service, but they would be, in effect, they would be in violation of.
I think when I talked to Sarah, I, because I just, I had that conversation with Sarah, and that's why at the last meeting, I said, I told you they're going to be full-time employees. Because that was my understanding, when I, after talking with Sarah, I think, value will tell you that they're going to be full-time employees, and what they mean by that is, they're going to get at least forty hours a week. That doesn't mean that they're going to be a value employee, that it might mean they're going to work for a temporary, but they'll be full-time.
It sounds like they're willing to, they're ready to be seventy-two direct hires.
They did, this is what Sarah talked about.
I mean, the more, more negotiations we can have, make those kind of commitments.
Okay, okay, so, let's move on to new business. We're in old business. Okay, John Julian, welcome.
Happy New Year's, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Um, the reason I'm here this evening is, I'm sure you recall, when we were talking about the utilities last year, the centerpiece of the financial requirements of the sewage works was a, um, a state mandated improvement to the sewage treatment plant. And we mentioned at that time that the state had committed from their lending program, a low-interest loan to cover the approximately seven and a half million dollar cost of that project. For that loan to be, um, possible, we have to adopt a bond ordinance authorizing the, uh, the borrowing of that money. And, um, the agenda this evening is the first reading of that, that ordinance, um, which is thirty-one pages long. And, um, Mayor asked me to read each page, but.
You have a smoker for me?
The ordinance is, um, is lengthy, but it is, in effect, um, I hate to say boilerplate, because of its importance. But it does follow the, uh, the general standard for a borrowing of this nature. Um, they're not asking for the, um, passage of this ordinance on final reading until the February meeting. Um, and so, um, if there are any questions associated with it, but in general, it just lays out the maximum amount that people borrow, the maximum repayment period, and the maximum interest rates, and some other promises that, that, uh, the city makes to the bond hold the state SRF program, and, um, the promises that the SRF program is going to be making to the city. I don't want to oversimplify it, but I certainly don't want to over, overcomplicate it, but that's, that's in general what the ordinance is needed for. Timing wise, as I mentioned, um, we've been looking to have this adopted in February. The state will probably come back with a few review comments, which is one of the reasons why we're not looking to pass it this evening. There might be some minor amendments at the February meeting for more cleanup than anything. After the ordinance is adopted, there'll be a notice published that, uh, informs the public of the project. Um, and, um, so that'll run through middle of February, maybe into, into early March, and then we'll be closing the loan in March, so that construction can start as soon as, you know, the weather brings. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are questions. Just one basic question, so, so the bond ordinance sets the maximum amount the city will borrow, and the maximum interest rate that they can borrow at. And so, because of a few years, you know, for whatever reason, the Fed's gone crazy, interest rates are now ten percent, that would require a new bond ordinance? Well, we'll know when we close the loan, it'll be a fixed, it'll be a fixed dividend. So, we'll be fixing this either, um, February, early March, and it'll be probably about two and a half percent.
The, uh, there was a change in, in section twenty-three, on page twenty-seven, they said, they updated this morning, and so I'm going to make sure if you're aware of it. It is, yeah, it's already in here. Basically, talks about us, or said the ordinance on two thousand thirteen dash fifteen, uh, on November fourth, and hence that's the rate.
Right, um, the bond council, when he drafted the first time, picked up the old rate ordinance, didn't update it for that, we adjusted, uh, adopted a new rate ordinance last year. So, this is an updating of the dates to, so in your package, it should refer to two thousand sixteen.
Okay, go ahead. Sure. Hold on, page twenty-seven.
Section twenty-three.
Yeah.
Says twenty sixteen dash thirty, December tenth, twenty sixteen, that's, that's my shift.
Okay, I didn't have that. Okay. So. Okay, any other questions, guys?
Thank you.
Please approve.
Okay, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posted, so passed.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Okay. Ashley.
Um, I just have the ordinance that I've been hearing a lot of people about, to play a part in the couch too.
Play a role.
I did see salaries at the top, I forgot to add, I didn't say that you have, you know, so in this new.
Looks like. And if you've got any questions, you're welcome. It's good to see you, it's handy here.
Yeah, I think that one did have no change. We're just going to say that this one is up.
Any questions? Motion to, or the last ordinance, two, twenty seventeen dash two.
Promote.
Second, second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will also say, at the beginning of the year, we had a little bit of confusion with ordinances. So, I've got a few that, in meetings, remember, if you guys can't sign off, I think already been approved, but somehow, I never got them returned to me. Um, and I think it was just confusion with, I was new, and so, but much for sure, I'm planning to be signed.
Interesting. Who actually drafts the ordinance and supports for the meetings?
Um.
You know, Chris.
There have, it's a mixture, I have done a couple of them, Chris has done some of them, Sydney Bass, I've done a bit of that.
Is it, is it a work document?
Usually, yes.
Would, would it be possible, when we're implementing new ordinance, like if there's new text, to put that in old, or to strike the text, to go to strike through? So it's easier to see what changes are.
Did you, did your, the copy of yours not come that way? Because that's what I'm actually like here, is see how that will come along, highlight it in gray.
Oh, the highlighting.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry about that, but yes, that's how it was done, and just, oh, whatever, as I've been getting copies of it, so yeah, I'll make sure that.
Maybe I get it with a scan or something.
Right, right, yeah.
Especially when they get really long.
Okay. Uh, we're up to the election of the two thousand seventeen council president.
Nominate Jamie Kane as council president.
Second.
Before he says no.
Chance now, let's get votes.
Any questions?
Are you set?
I, I do thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I've got hail to the teeth queued up right here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posted. Okay, so pass Jamie. Uh, newspaper of the, for us, will be Greensburg Daily News and Daily Times.
You got a motion? I'll make a motion.
Okay, second. Any questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cancel a special counsel, maybe in January for a request. Just want to make that correct, if everybody had one of these, so that's a, a request. What date would you guys like to try this?
Do we want to do it towards the end, John?
We're in the February. We've got a lot of meetings coming up, Mayor.
I know.
But we have to have it, okay. Maybe we may the twenty-third?
I don't know.
We all got houses in there.
About the third. Thirtieth, I think we have Board Works.
We have Board Works, yep, are permanent. It's the thirtieth.
Where's all the stuff at?
No.
Can we go in if that door?
It's on a pay. I don't know why you can't, I don't know why you can't observe.
Although you.
I think it'd be okay.
You want to do it, do it thirteenth?
So, where's thirteen? It's on a pay. Okay. Why don't you?
At what time?
You want to do six?
Thirteen.
You want to, you want to do seven?
I can do six, five, nine, you six, thirteen.
Is it, is this just for us, or is this for all?
They're going to come in for this, Mayor.
I said six.
Okay, so, February, this, at six o'clock.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. At six o'clock, the funding request, I'll have Sarah contact. Okay. Um, I did take two, uh, Board Works amendment to the policy for police and farm. We're going to have P A Ds instead of holidays, for police and farm. And, uh, basically, policemen to do their twenty-eight day, thirty day cycle, twenty-eight day cycle, they need to have a day in their work. If they didn't have any days off, they would receive overtime, and this kind of helps, that we be at overtime, a little bit of that role of hours. Now, they still can do overtime, or get called in, but this is just a structure. In the old days, in the old days, it used to be called Kelly Days, and we used the farm department to take care of the overtime part. There are certain months that you work more days than you do others, and you receive more hours. And that's why they do thirteen hours, or fifteen holidays, but return it, they'll be at least, so they're still getting their holidays, but they'll be usual every month, every. So, that was a change. That's a need to prove, or is it? Just a. Board Works can prove.
Just a proof, you tried to board it?
Yes.
It was proven the last one.
Correct, yeah. And you'll notice you got a forty, it's four point two, because you don't have duty, because, um, one to police for farm, and then that, the four point four was, was basically saying that they can't use the. The old one said holiday, so we changed. Okay. Board Works. I guess you're in.
Okay, quickly here, we did award bids for stone gravel to New Flintstone, concrete award went to Raver, and the fuel bid is split between Premier Ag and Speedway. Um, Mark also told us that, uh, the state is going to be paving South Michigan Street, uh, North Michigan Street, and Ireland, is that correct?
And Main Street between, between Ireland and South Michigan.
And this Main Street.
So, late, sometime next construction season, it hasn't been awarded yet, so they don't have a, a schedule, but they haven't, they don't know who their contractor is, and their contractor gets a certain time to complete, so it could be probably anytime before the end of the contract.
And, uh, it, uh, they will be using Wilder Street as a detour, giving them permission to do that, with the understanding that if there's any damage, that they will take care of the damage on Wilder Street, and that'll only be for five days. Um, Chief Bridges came, uh, to the board, he purchased a two thousand seventeen Charger for ten thousand dollars plus trade, and a Ford Explorer for twenty-eight thousand, and in addition, it'll be twenty thousand dollars to equip those two cars. Um, we set up interviews for police officers for the twenty-fifth of this month, we set up, uh, interviews with Chief Garrett for firefighters. On the thirtieth of this month, Jeff Smith requested a special board of works, uh, that's going to be on January seventeenth. And then the mayor talked about the, the P T O when they time off the fire police.
Okay, just, uh, Dawn?
Yes.
You don't have to take the first, or take the stand.
Am I in trouble?
Well, no, Ashley's got it.
The ordinance?
I need you guys to listen to real quick, and I think I can add.
I spoke with Chris in between meetings, um, we omitted, shouldn't say really omitted, there was longevity ordinance change. I had the old ordinance number listed. I had the old ordinance number listed in that, in the utility sal, salary ordinance. Um, Chris feels that the amended longevity ordinance that we passed this evening will cover that, so we will not have to amend.
Passed last year, it was done after. Longevity, new longevity ordinance is inserted in that ordinance that passed, or the water that references the ordinance, it's not updated. So, I think we're, I mean, it's.
Did everyone else see their copy of this? Not that, no, that. We just found out, like, Friday late afternoon, that you guys were gonna do the new ordinances. But I don't think we need to do the utility.
So, all it's doing is, in the old, the ordinance you adopted last year, it's now putting down the new ordinance number that you adopted after that. That'll spend it to address longevity. So, the new ordinance already addresses longevity, replaces the one that was referenced when the budget was passed.
Yes.
So, I, so by doing that, in that order, I think we should be okay, and come twenty seventeen, we'll make sure we have
Right.
the correct, updated ordinance specifically in the budget.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, we thought we had to do it in the, so we should be good, but thank you very much. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, we're off and started for another year, so, so, I think we're off and beginning. I'm sure someone out there is having a good year. I think mostly closed meeting. Second? All in favor, say aye.